Good evening and welcome to the November 5th meeting of the Governing Body's holiday meeting of the order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Gilbert, who will provide the indication, stand as you are able and then remain standing.
I want to introduce Reverend Donna Gilchrist. She is pastor at Westside Christian Church, Disciples of Christ denomination. She came to us from Oklahoma in 2018. Westside Christian started as Auburndale Mission in 1909 in a little church around First and Lindenwood, just down the street from where the current church and fellowship building are at Sixth and Lindenwood. A woman named Clara Hazelrigg served the church as one of its early pastors from 1914 to 1931 and had tremendous influence on the flavor and actions of Westside Christian today. An element of that special flavor is the community engagement of Westside. Westside is part of the Midtown Community Services Group that includes Westside Christian, Westside Baptist, Potwin Presbyterian, Meadows Elementary, and Loman Hill Elementary, and variously other groups such as the Episcopal Diocese rooted to Topeka and Silverbacks. Current activities include a kids closet, Thanksgiving boxes for Loman Hill students, and holiday boxes for Meadows students. Westside Christian is a part of Doorstep. Members do some volunteer work with Family Service and Guidance Center, Ronald McDonald House, and KBC Behavioral Health Care, and members are in the process of developing some services for children and adults with disabilities. Westside is a musical church. They have a music ministry, and their choir and bell choir performed at events such as the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice's Martin Luther King Day program and Nativities and Noel's, does a fall music festival that includes the Topeka High Madrigals and Potwin Presbyterian's String Ensemble. It's wonderful to see a church so rooted in the community. Reverend Gilchrist herself has also served on the Topeka Center for Peace and Justice's board for the past seven years and currently serves as its chair.
So I'd like to, I'd like to open this evening with a book, just a very short devotional from Will Bowen, Letters to You Love God. And so if you'll just listen as if these were written lovingly to you from God. "To you, if I could put my arms around you, I would, but that would mean I'm outside of you rather than one with every cell of your being. If I could speak to you, I would, but that would set my voice apart from the sounds of nature and the voices of others. If I could hold your hand during times of trouble, I would, but that would close your grasp just when your hands need to be open and reaching. If I could guarantee you a pain-free tomorrow, I would, but that would only serve to rob you of the growth and clarity difficult experiences bring. If I could convince you that you are loved, guided, and lack nothing, just as you are, I would, for indeed, that is the truth. Love, God." Will you pray with me? Giver of life, as we settle into this space, we breathe deeply, breathing in, breathing out, settling in. We let go of the busyness that has been part of this day and pause. So thankful for your presence and for each person in this room, for each person in this city. Open the eyes of our hearts, Lord, so that relationships might be deepened and strengthened and Topeka might be transformed by your wisdom and love. These meetings and discussions have the capacity to become an ordinary fabric of ordinary days, and yet we look to you to move each person here beyond the ordinary, filled with the knowledge that what they do truly matters and affects lives. Give each council member the strength to stand behind their constituents as well as the flexibility to bend and compromise. Give our mayor and his staff all that they need to govern well. Remind this council that their individual differences bring important perspective to the table. Their respect, compassion, and ability to listen with an open heart and mind in the midst of disagreement set a tone for this entire community. This work is valuable. Open the eyes of each heart in this room. May they see the opportunity to transform Topeka as they lead with compassion, integrity, respect, and love. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Aquila.
Here.
Ortiz.
Banks.
Here.
Cal.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
Thank you. Move on to Agenda, Item Two, Consent Agenda.
A is approval of professional consulting contract between the City of Topeka and Columbia Capital Management, LLC for providing debt and investment management. B is approval of utilities department contract for professional engineering and design services between the City of Topeka and Bartlett West Incorporated, an amount not to exceed $476,000. C is approval of a Public Works Department Contract Amendment for Professional Engineering and Design Services between the City of Topeka and Professional Engineering Consultants, PA, for an updated contract amount not to exceed $59,000. D is approval of a three-year labor agreement contract between the City of Topeka and the Development Services Division of ASME Council 611294. E is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 28125008 for the water main replacement along Southwest Moundview Drive from Southwest 45th Street to Southwest 49th Street to further described here in Exhibit A. F is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmember Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 841106 Phase Three for 2026 cracked ceiling of streets in the southeast and east central portion of the city as further described in Exhibit A. G is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 841096 Phase One, Two, Three, and Four, and Project 29112906 for alley reconstruction and sanitary sewer improvements in the area of Southwest Seventh Street and Southwest Clay Street as further described in Exhibit A. H is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 841091 Phase One for street improvements in Northwest Clay Street, Northwest Tyler Street, Northwest Polk Street, and US 24 Frontage Road as further described in Exhibit A. I am minutes of the regular meeting of October 21, 2025, and there are two serial malt beverage, three serial malt beverage license applications. First one's for Oden Blair, 29, 221 North Kansas Avenue, and the second we have for Super Roto at 2021 Southeast 21st Street, and then an off premise for On the Run at 3021 Southwest 10th Avenue, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Thank you. You've heard the Consent Agenda and the items on the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion from the body?
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilman Banks.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Okay. We'll take the roll call, please.
All right. Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Move on to Action Items, Agenda Number Three. Madam Clerk.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, setting the public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district at the Northwest Quadrant of Topeka Boulevard and Kansas Avenue pursuant to KSA 126A26 at Seek.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the Governing Body, Braxton Copley, Deputy City Manager will lead us through this item.
Thank you. For the purpose of being efficient, I'm going to talk about both A and B. So just to get everyone on the same page, back, the October 7th meeting, the Governing Body passed a resolution setting a public hearing, and that public hearing is going to be next week, November 12th. And the public hearing that's going to be next week is for whether or not the Governing Body is going to establish a TIF redevelopment district, Tax Increment Finance Redevelopment District, for Sunflower Crossing, which is located at approximately the northwest corner of the intersection of Kansas and Topeka, right across the street from the KTA building. So again, that's next week, and that's going to be the hearing. Tonight, the first item that we have on is a resolution setting a public hearing, and this will be for the establishment of a Community Investment District, the CID, for this same area, and that will be held December, December 9th. Next item that we're going to have is a resolution setting a public hearing for the TIF project plan. So the TIF project plan is the actual specific plan for what they want to do, which is different than the TIF district, which is what you guys are going to be considering next week. And again, the overall plan for Sunflower Development is approximately seven acres, looking at a total investment of about $16 million, and it would be a convenience store, a restaurant, and then a retail box. And so again, first action is resolution setting the CID. Would ask for your approval of that, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Again, this is just to set the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Deputy City Manager? Seeing none, there is a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Cal. And a second by Councilman Banks. So we're ready to vote.
Councilmember Hiller.
I'm sure.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Move to the mentioned action item 3B. Madam Clerk.
B is a resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Topeka, Kansas, determining that the city is considering the adoption of a redevelopment project plan within the boundaries of the proposed Sunflower Crossing Redevelopment District, establishing the date and time of a public hearing on such matter, and providing for the giving of notice of such public hearing.
City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Deputy City Manager Copley mentioned, similar issue here as far as establishing the public hearing for the TIF with the same development. Stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor Cal. I'll second that motion. Okay. Or, yeah, your name just popped up. Second from Councilwoman Hofer.
There we go.
Okay. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Move to Action Item C. Madam Clerk.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert Perez, making certain findings pursuant to the Kansas Reinvestment Housing Incentive District Act with regard to an application submitted by LB Lots, LLC to establish an additional reinvestment housing incentive district, and requesting that the Secretary of Commerce review the resolution and advise the Governing Body.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the Governing Body, Braxton Copley, Deputy City Manager will lead us through this item.
Thank you. So the city received an application from the party that has an ownership interest in approximately 105 lots at Lawrence Bay, and this is a request to establish a reinvestment housing improvement district at Lawrence Bay. You will remember, the Governing Body did approve a previous phase, which was approximately 15 buildable lots earlier this year. I will tell you that today, the city received building permit applications for the first two homes to be constructed in Phase One, and I've also been informed that within the next couple of days, they should have the details worked out to submit permits for two additional homes. But this, that's Phase One, just wanted to give you an update on where we are there. Phase Two is what's in front of you. Again, this would be the first step, would be simply to establish a district, and then that would require Commerce approval. It would then require a subsequent resolution establishing a public hearing for consideration of a specific project plan, would require the financial analysis, and would require a development agreement. So those would be steps down the road. As attachments to the item, I did include the total amount of the outstanding specials and taxes. Happy to answer any questions on that. And then I also included the proposed material deal terms that would include the East Side lots, which there are approximately 21 lots. The deal terms are very similar to what was approved for what we call Lawrence Bay, Phase One, and that would be a payment of $2.25 per square foot, which would basically cover the past due specials, payment of the past due real estate taxes, and then instead of the CID, which we use to, as a tool to spread the future specials out over 20 years, the developer here, instead we propose to make a present value payment of what those future specials are. And then the ask is for the city to convey to the developer the land around the pond where there are improvements, including a dam and a sidewalk. So that's the East 21 lots, the West 74 lots. The proposal from the developer would include the payment of past due real estate taxes and a payment for the discounted present value of the future specials, as well as the reiterating the ask for the land around the pond, and then, as proposed, there would be no specials for the developer. There is no agreement in place. Staff is simply conveying to you what the developer has provided as potential deal terms, and I believe we'll stop there and see if you have any, any questions for me or any direction for staff in terms of engaging the developer in conversations, and I think that there may be a conferee signed up on this, Mayor.
Yeah, before, before we get into discussion, I'd like to entertain those people who have signed up to speak on this item. The first person is Danielle Twemel.
Thank you. Well, I won't reiterate the terms that were laid out and presented, except for a few specific pieces that I want to point out under these terms, that there's a discounted value of total future specials, meaning paying less, again, than what he's already supposed to be paying. I do believe that our ordinance and the, and the deal that was done originally is that the city maintains this pond and the land around it and the dam, and that's part of an ordinance. So we actually pay money to maintain all of that property that he wants us to give him. I do want to point out that there's a few parts about this RHID that are very problematic, besides the fact that after hearing that tonight about the number, I believe that even exceeds the RHID limit of the total number of houses within an RHID that you can sell. But even within the resolution, one other thing that was stated that in connection with the establishment of the RHID described here, and the Governing Body hereby waives the requirement that the RES LB Lots, Phase Two, Secretary of Commerce review, blah, 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 not be delinquent on its property taxes or special assessment payments on any property it owns or controls in Shawnee County, yada, yada, yada. Basically, within this resolution, the council is being asked to waive a crucial statutory requirement that in connection with that establishment, we are basically stating, you know, we're going to go ahead and forgive you, we're not going to, you know, we're to suspend the rule that we have in place that says we're not doing business with somebody who owes us money, right? So yet again, as part of the steps moving forward, we would have to also pass an ordinance, again, stating he's not held responsible for what he owes. So let's be clear. Within the RHID, which was Senate Bill 17, there was an addition that was added, really to strengthen up the use of it back in 2023, where the RHID is supposed to produce modest attainable homes, not luxury properties, reinforcing workforce housing intent. The Kansas Department of Commerce Guidelines defines workforce housing as housing that is affordable to households earning between 60% and 150% of the area median income. The average size of each resident per project cannot exceed 1,650 square feet excluding garage, all that kind of stuff. We've already, did not get accurate renderings the first go-round. No one made him be responsible for giving accurate renderings that counteracted that amount. What he produced was actually much larger in that paperwork. But this proposal also raises serious concerns about standards, priorities, and accountability. We're wasting taxpayer dollars entertaining this. Would other developers or businesses get away with this? And I feel like the answer is yes, and it kind of makes me double question Facebook group that is out there talking about accountability. One thing that has come up quite often is a business called Kansas Topsoil. So upon a very quick search on the Secretary of State's Business Entity Registry on this agency, on this business that we contract with all the time, they're not even a registered business. They forfeited that in 2023 for failure to submit proper documentation, taking their identity number onto the federal government's safety measurement system. That US dot number has no current for hire operating authority. So I really do question our accountability measures we have with contracting.
Chuck Daltmyer, Daltmyer Homes. Braxton, what, what was he actually paying now for the specials on the next 95? Did you say zero?
Public comment.
It's just a public comment, Chuck.
Okay. Well, anyway, to replace those lots would cost about $65,000 apiece. Okay. He's paying less than, I think we discounted him 60% as to what he's paying. And on top of that, he's going after the RHID, which means the city already has not collected taxes on that for 15 years, and we've got another 20 years to go now, because he's, he's going to take the RHID. That's not what that program was built about. It was built to entice developers to build infrastructure in the smaller towns. And what he's using is a bailout, because he refused to pay the specials. His investment on 80 of those lots was $1. I resent that the other, that Topeka builders are not offered the same, the same issues that he has been dealt with. That would be a sellout if you guys would, if somebody would have put a marketing plan together on, on Lawrence Bay. That land's just too valuable to let go at what the city's doing. Each one of those lots, you could pick up $50,000 face value on it, and we could also work in $165 a month specials if that's what we need to do, and there would be very little loss by the city on that land. It's just been sitting around too long. It was by design, by, by the developer, and that's how he operates his commercial accounts. That's not what residential's about. He blights a shopping center, and then he goes after the sales tax money. This is not a TIF program and shouldn't be, and that's what he's considering it for. So I would ask the city not to make any more agreements like the last one, and I would be willing to go in there and put a million dollars in that project and get power to that west side, but the city's going to have to spend some money on those streets, because they're, they're down to rock, and the asphalt's just worn off. So if you want to fund that for another 25 years, I guess that's a choice to make, but please don't make another deal like he just did on those 15 lots.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Pass the Governing Body under discussion. Is there anything they want to offer on this item? On this item?
No, I don't like it.
Pardon?
Councilmembers.
Oh, okay. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Braxton. Talk a little bit about city providing the developer the land surrounding the pond. That, from the existing property lines of the houses to the, to the water line, does it include the Lawrence Bay itself? What does, what does that mean? Do you have, have any idea?
No, sir, I don't, but I can tell you that I have some very grave concerns about any sort of conveyance of that land. First and foremost, the city currently has tax-exempt bonds because it did improvements on that, that land to construct the High Hazard Dam, as well as to construct a public sidewalk along there that'll allow as members of the public to walk around that pond. I briefly discussed it with Bond Counsel, and they share my concerns in terms of our inability to sell an asset for which we have tax-exempt bonds that provides a public benefit that was done under a benefit district project for public improvements.
That'd be sort of like taking, right away, building the street, charging specials to the homeowner, and then give it, give them the street to one of those homeowners. Is that, that fairly analogous?
That would be directly analogous.
Thank you. I, I can't support this. I think we, first of all, I think when these things come in front of us, we need at least a draft agreement that's, is pretty close to final. I can't support giving the property around the lake to any single private entity, and frankly, I can't, I cannot support past due specials on the west lots not being paid. So I will not be in favor of approving this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valdivia Aquila.
Thank you, Mayor. I will not be supporting this, staying pretty consistent. The resolution, where once again, he is being given advantages that the average Joe on the street would never even been given a chance to have, which is a waiving of the requirement by the RHID for him not to be a delinquent on property tax or special. This guy just always seems to want to get as much as he can get and give as little as he can. And I think right now, more than any time when we're in a government shutdown and we have furloughed workers, and we don't know what's happening with SNAP, and we're going to have to, there's going to be all these hungry people out there, and all of this suffering that we are going to most likely see as we go forward, to me, the mindset that he has is kind of like similar to left-of-meet cake. So I cannot support this. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I was hesitant when we made that first deal, and it was, my, I looked at it as we were getting some lot back in the specials and things like that, and this deal is nowhere close to the original. And my, my thinking on that first one was, get, get those first 15 done, and then we'll talk, but this developer has seemed to want to go on a media tour and try to, it feels like pressure us into doing this deal, so this is something, you know, I said from the beginning, is do those, then we talk, but nothing's been done yet. The only thing I want to clarify- The only thing I want to clarify with people is, yes, RHID used to be for rural neighborhood, you know, smaller towns and things like that. As of 2023, the state of Kansas changed it, and bigger cities are allowed to do this now. Not agreeing, like I said, not agreeing with this proposal at all for this, but they changed the name to the Reinvestment Housing Incentive District and changed the guidelines to what where Topeka does fall in the guidelines now. So, but this is something I definitely cannot support, especially since something's been done on the first part. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Braxton, are all of these lots part of the foreclosure action that the county has taken?
Yes, sir. There are 122 lots in the foreclosure that also encompass some other property owners, but all of these are.
Are included as part of that. Yeah, so I have some of the same concerns that have been expressed by the other council members, so if we were going through this, I would express those two, same with the conveyance of property. But I'm even going to take it one step back. I'm not comfortable sending something to the state that's on the foreclosure action. To me, that's a simple, that's very simple to me. I mean, there's a way they can rectify that, pay the back taxes, work with the county to take that action. But as far as I'm concerned, too, they've taken that action. That train is moving forward, and I'm not sending some recommendation to the state on properties that are under foreclosure action either. So if they can resolve that, I still don't like the terms of this, but then I'm willing to have that conversation, at least, I guess. But for me, that in and of itself is problematic. So that's another reason I can't support this at this time.
Councilman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess what I'm hearing, and help me if I'm missing it, is that these properties could sell for, the lots themselves could be sold, built on and sold with a $50,000 value. With few exceptions, there isn't more than $50,000 owed on any of them. And if they were purchased for a dollar, then you got it. So the private market could take care of selling them or making whatever kinds of inter-developer commitments needed to be made to pick up those lots and get them moving. So I'm not comfortable with us waiving. I, too, like Deputy Mayor Kell, I felt like doing the first 15 to kind of get things moving was okay, but I was not comfortable with us following up on further subsidy. Sounds like they're not even eligible from what our speaker said, that the house prices would be too large and the houses would be too large. So with those, and the fact that I, too, as Councilman Duncan says, I don't want to send anything to the state just to kind of go through the motions if we're not really comfortable with carrying it through. Thank you.
I would have to reiterate comments by Councilman Duncan. It doesn't make any sense for us to push something forward to the state that, from I can hear from this consensus here, that there isn't support for. So I don't see any motion from the body to take any kind of action on this. So correct me if I'm wrong, we'll move on to the next item.
Mayor, if I may, certainly, one option that you would have would be to continue this public hearing, say for a month, to give us an opportunity to go back to the developer. We had some clear feedback from Councilmember Dobler that there's no interest in conveying any of the property around the lake, and there's no interest in the waiver of the past due specials for those lots on the west side. If there's direction from Councilmember Duncan to also say that they would have to pay past due taxes to get those removed from the foreclosure sale, we could have those conversations and see if there are some deal terms to come back. That's just an option so that we didn't have to receive another RHID application to start the clock again and then do another resolution, setting a public hearing, just as a consideration. I mean, I work for you guys. If you want us to have the conversation to see if they want to sharpen their pencil to come with deal terms that are very similar to what was Phase One, that's a possibility. If it's, you know, like I mentioned, they have pulled permits for the first two and intend to pull permits for the next two. You tell me how you want me to proceed. I'm just, we need another option out for consideration.
Thank you. There's some comments here, but I have one as well. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, Braxton, you're suggesting we table this action for one month?
Certainly, you would have the ability to not close the public hearing and go ahead and defer this for a month to give us an opportunity, staff an opportunity, to engage the developer in conversations to see if there is a potential path forward with terms that would be more acceptable to the governing body, because I'm hearing loud and clear, these proposed terms are not acceptable.
I would go ahead and make that motion to table this until the first meeting in December.
Can we make that to the second meeting in December, since I will not be here for the first meeting in December?
Second meeting, that's fine. Or we can make it the first meeting of January.
Deputy Mayor has a comment. Deputy Mayor.
Honestly, I think if there's a deal to be made, that's the developers to come to us. We don't need chasing down the developer and trying to work with them. If they want a true deal, they need to be coming to us and, you know, to me, you know, I've said this recently with these RHID, TIF, CIDs, all that, we need to have set plan before we're going to start approving these. And with this kind of a, well, here's kind of what they want kind of thing with nothing in writing, I can't support a lot of those anymore because it doesn't seem like we're getting anywhere when we've done these. We have a mall lot that's sitting there for almost four years now with nothing done to it, and it's in a TIF district. So it's one of those things that I don't see us needing to go to him. He needs to come to us. He needs to have the plan, and we say yes or no. But it doesn't need a lot of negotiation. It doesn't need to waste a lot of our time. This is something that the developer wants, not something we need. So thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
So two things. First of all, can I get a clarification on what the motion is from Councilmember Dobler on the date?
I think that would be the second meeting in December.
Okay. And the first thing is I will second that then, since I didn't have a second. I agree with Councilman Kell, Deputy Mayor Kell, in concept. I think the point Braxton's trying to make is, under the RHID policy, if we do nothing to it, then this one's over. And then they have to redo the whole RHID application, which actually takes more staff time, more costs. And so leaving it open to see if there's a path is the easier path at this point for everybody, including staff, rather than closing it and making them go through the whole process again. So I think that was, so that's why I would say I'm okay with this, because I understand they don't want to do more work.
Councilman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, if the proposed size and price of the housing isn't even eligible for RHID, why are we even talking about it?
Do we know that to be factually true?
Well, I'm asking, you know, he was quoting the income level and the house size.
I'll defer to the city attorney to answer the legal question that is being asked.
So I will say that I was not prepared for this question going in, but I did some research as I'm sitting here. The guidelines state that the only, there is no specific size mentioned in those guidelines. There is, however, a limit that the housing be based on 95% of the median purchase price for the area, using FHA data. So, but I don't know in this particular case what is actually being proposed, or, so I can't tell you whether or not this proposal meets that criteria. So I believe there would have to be some follow-up with the developer on the proposal to make sure that they meet the criteria and are eligible.
Well, considering what we've heard this evening, and I agree with some of the other comments about the first phase that we did, I was hopeful, but also not all that optimistic that things would get better and there would be some action, and I haven't seen that. I don't want to personally move forward with anything additional until the first phase is addressed. And I understand the logistics of having to start it all over again. I don't see it as us chasing, but if you give a time limit, kind of like Time Certain is going to, it's either going to be presentable and meet the qualifications by the second meeting in December, or it isn't, that we don't continue to keep giving that opportunity. I mean, it's very clear what the body is saying here about their concerns. So that would be my position, that I would support the motion to move it to the second meeting in December, but I wouldn't be inclined to go any further than that if we can't come to some concrete details in resolution. Councilman Vadeviakla.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just want confirmation, please, from city attorney that they are or are not eligible for the RHID. Councilwoman Hiller was looking up some quick figures based on that 90%, 95% median, about $150,000 to $175,000, which are not the prices that those houses are going to be going for. So, dead on, $149,000. So I'm asking that you come up with something and send it to the governing body about legally whether they can apply for this or not, and that if they cannot, which it sounds like they should not be able to, then we need to be more careful in how we're utilizing this RHID and actually following how it's meant to be followed. But I would request that you send something to the full governing body before it comes back up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Further discussion? We have a motion and a second to defer to the second meeting in December. No further discussion. We have the motion and the second by Councilman Duncan. We're ready to vote then on that motion.
Yep, and this is to table until December 9th. Okay, the motion carries. We have Councilmembers Hiller and Councilmember Kell voting no. The motion carries. You have seven yes.
City Attorney, do you believe that's a legitimate request that Councilwoman Vadeviakla gave us, so that really we know?
Yes, Your Honor. I'd be happy to look into that a little further and make sure that I'm correct with my on-the-fly research here, but I found the federal regulation, and I'd be happy to look into that and send that out.
Okay, thank you. All right. That's the last of our action items. Move on to non-action items. Madam Clerk.
A is discussion related to the city's revised water and wastewater rate structures effective January 1, 2026.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will lead us to this item. This is going to basically be a discussion on the readiness to serve charge, which we've had very good discussion going through the PI Committee, and so we're happy to discuss it here this evening.
Director Davis.
Good evening, governing body. Tonight, we come before you to present a proposed change to our utility rate ordinance. This is a result of careful thought and consideration with the Public Infrastructure Committee. And before we walk through some of the edits, I just wanted to spend a minute to express my thanks and gratitude to those on the governing body who took the time to come meet with us and walk through the challenges, how we got here, and then some proposed resolutions through that, also with the PI Committee for working with us and helping navigate what we want to see moving forward. I also want to take a minute to say thank you to the team that we have internally, our billing team, our customer service team. Since the initiation of readiness to serve, the customer service team has really taken a lot of calls, a lot of complaints, a lot of questions, and they've done that with really great, positive attitudes. They've been wonderful working through this. And then our billing team, I don't know that anybody quite understands the impact that it has on them to make what seems like a simple change to our rates and billing structure. So I want to thank them as well. We've been working well with them and trying to understand the impact and how feasible it is to make some of these changes. So with that being said, to keep it simple, this ordinance in front of you proposes amending the readiness to serve charge that is in the current utility rate ordinance to revert that back to a base charge as it was prior to January 1 of 2024. This proposed base charge would be assessed to those utility customers with active water and wastewater service. Currently, the readiness to serve charge applies a base charge to customers with a meter on their property regardless of whether or not they have service. Most of you are well aware of this. We've been through this, and I know that it's been a huge source of conflict. So I think this proposed resolution really helps kind of meet everybody in the middle. We've gone almost two years now with the readiness to serve charge. So the existing ordinance had us moving into 2026, continuing that readiness to serve charge. This is proposed changes. And to help highlight the impact that that's going to have, so we know that the rates were set through 2026. In your ordinance, you have all the suggested changes, but I'm just going to take one of those, our most common average customers. So you have a sheet with you, and I think we can show it up on the screen, Dan, if you can do that for us. If this proposed change is approved, then effective January 1 of 2026, to account for the changes, the impacts to the water and wastewater utilities, the active customers will see a modest increase to their rate that was previously set for 2026. So the current language, as you see on the handout that you guys have in front of you, our existing 2025 rate today for an average customer, which is the most common residential water meter size, we have a 5/8 inch water meters and the most common stormwater rate that we have, which is a Tier 2. 1735 is the 2025 readiness to serve charge. For the 2026 existing ordinance, that charge was set to increase to $18.22 for water. An average bill would also see wastewater moving to $14.43, and then that property would also see stormwater at $7.34, for a total of $39.99. That is what the 2026 bill would look like with no change to the ordinance. This proposed language, if you do not have active water service, would mean you no longer pay the readiness to serve charge for water or wastewater, but you would still be required to pay the stormwater utility fees. So your bill would look like $7.34 as opposed to $39.99. If you have active water service, your bill is going to, your base charge will now be $19.12 for water, $15.21 for wastewater, and again, that stormwater charge of $7.34. So that bill would look more like $41.67 as opposed to $39.99 if these charges, if these changes are approved. So I just hope that that helps highlight the impact that these changes have. And with that, I guess let me add one more thing. This, just to clarify, this is with no water usage. Water usage would then be added on top of that base charge. So just to keep that clear. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for the Director. Okay. Councilman Vadeviakla.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit confused on here. So this active base would go up like $1.68. Is that from, so? like a dollar sixty-eight. Is that from, so the rates are all set, all of our rates were set to increase January one of 2026. So that would have gone up to eighteen dollars and twenty-two cents if we stayed with readiness to serve.
Yeah.
As opposed to just moving that eighteen dollars and twenty-two cents to active customers only, by increasing this, we account for the lost revenue of all of the people that are currently paying readiness to serve.
So the decision, obviously, because I watched part of the Public Works and Infrastructure meeting when you spoke, it was wanting to get rid of the readiness to serve and that the ones that have not been collected on, that's going to be dealt somewhere down the road. So why is it, though, what logic is it to increase the active base because you're not getting anything anymore in the way that you did with the readiness to serve? I mean, why are the active folks having to get an additional increase?
That's a great question. So when utility rates were discussed in 2023 and set for 24, 25, 26, those rates are set out. We base all of our operating budget off of those rates. Our capital improvement plans are based off those rates. We plan for this amount of money that was approved for those next three years. If we, we discussed that and the, let me see, the implementation of readiness to serve, if you go, I've gone back through the notes, looked through the discussions that we had while we were setting those rates, and the implementation of readiness to serve was to help reduce the impact to our active customer base, all the other users that are using the service. This was a way to offset that and reduce that. So if we take that away, we need to account for those dollars somehow, and that's what the impact would be. This is what we're showing that increase to be.
And how are you, how are you explaining that to your customers, that they're going to be hit again with more increase in fees?
So to account for the normal change from twenty-five to twenty-six, we would be increasing, we would be implementing an education campaign, want to make sure we put those, a note on the message board on our billing system, and then help prepare our customer service team to help answer questions when they come in. However, with this change, we've discussed not just implementing messaging on our billing system, but working with our communications team and making sure that we're very clear as to what changes they're going to see with, regardless of whether this ordinance goes through or not. There's going to be an increase.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Duncan?
I don't understand what we're doing here. I mean, I understand what it's telling me we're doing. I don't understand what we're doing here. One of the pitches to us of readiness to serve and putting on inactive accounts was to put pressure on people who have long sat on properties, refused to do anything with those properties, and give them one more, if you will, incentive to actually develop and do something because they continue to pay these fees. That was one of the reasons we pitched to us when we did this. Now, I voted no in the first place, so I didn't like this thing from day one, and I get that. So instead, what we're doing is we're now saying, one of the reasons we originally put this in place, we're going to negate, reduce the fee for those people, and offset it by putting it on the people who are already paying more. They get to eat that fee. That makes no sense to me. I would rather see us have, even if it's some kind of flat, generic fee, take away wastewater, stormwater, and just say inactive RTS fee, or whatever the heck we want to call it, and charge a base rate at that, and then charge everybody for their actual usage plus these on these other three, so that that can be reduced. That would make more sense to me, something as that model, that we're, that way we're not having to raise the fee on these people who are active users, but we're also still collecting something as that piece, twenty bucks, fifteen, I don't know what that number is. So I am not going to vote for something that increases the active base fee. I just can't do that. And so for me, if there's a way to tweak that and fix it, I'm open to that, but I just can't, I can't vote for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
So what, on our overall customers, how, what was our percentage we added when we did the readiness to serve? Like, ten percent overall, five percent?
Oh.
It's approximately a million. Readiness to serve generates approximately a million dollars a year between water and wastewater. That's probably the easiest way to, to its odds.
Right, percentage-wise.
Because I, I, Councilman Duncan kind of stole my thunder on that. That was the reason, you know, put some pressure on some people that are just sitting on vacant properties. But to me, it's like, people have had, that are now under readiness to serve have an issue, but now, so they've been mad about this, but now we're going to shift it and make other people mad just by shift, I mean, we're just shifting money around. It's like, I, I was going to even sit there and say that we need to really look at the, I mean, we need to look more at the stormwater, make sure we're hitting certain, some of these properties on that aspect of, it may be a vacant property, but I mean, I'm all about trying to get some of these properties moving, and they've been sitting there for decades. And anything we can do to start getting some of these moving, because for some of these, all it is is a tax haven for some of these people to own that property, and I'm, kind of like, as Councilman Duncan said, I'm ready to put pressure on people to start moving on these properties so we can start having people develop them and start putting people into, into homes rather than having vacant lots or rundown homes that are out there. And I'm really against just shifting it from one group to another group now, and the people that have been, have been paying their bills now get added, added on to it. So I wouldn't support this either.
So just to answer your initial question that it's eight point nine five percent, that is across the three different utilities. Actually, that's across, yeah, all three utilities. So your points are all, I hear you. This is exactly what we discussed in our one-on-ones. You know, that is why it has taken so long to determine what the options should be, because we knew the people that were initially impacted by readiness to serve, less than two percent of our customer base, and if we were to revert back, that impact would hit active customers. So we serve for you. You guys help us determine what those rates are. Anybody that sat through those rate discussions understands the magnitude of, and that, that, all the fine details of how we come up with that. And so I would only add that this is a short-term solution to this challenge. We know that 2026 is right around the corner, and we have to start those bigger rate discussions. So some of the questions that you all have, I think we absolutely need to continue to talk through as we look at how our rates are going to change and what impact that might be to customers moving in beyond 2026. So I just ask, you know, as you guys consider what options are, we're trying to, that's what we worked with the committee to do, is try to find some sort of resolution for the short term and then address some of these bigger challenges beyond, if that makes sense.
Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. Sorry, I appreciate that you focused on the, on the readiness to serve, but it confused me. And so, did you take the readiness to serve and move a hundred percent of that dollar charge into just other people's base fees, or did you spread it through the entire network?
We, and Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, if you hear something, you can run up here, but we took the loss of revenue for 2026. That's the desire to start on that day one. We took the loss of revenue for that year and applied it across the different rates. So when you look at the ordinance in front of you, I'm only talking about one classification.
Right.
There's lots of other ones that are impacted by that base.
Okay, so you spread it through the whole system. It's not just the base charge for active users. I appreciate that answer. I remember...
Active users across the base charge.
Understood.
Yeah.
No?
You just said not just for active user, for active users, yes.
For active users, but you spread it through the various levels of...
Yes.
Costs, not just the base.
One inch, three inch, four inch large meters that our industries are using.
Right.
All of those rates are increased.
I remember when we did this before, that it was a real high priority of the council to, to keep the rates as minimal as possible for people with the smallest lines. Understand that for the most part, those would be our LMI residential users, and so I appreciate that. And it looks like you've carried it forward. And if there was some heartburn about that on any of these rates, maybe we could talk about moving that to a different, you know, level. But I, I remember that that was our most important thing, and it looks like you've sustained that.
That's how we came up with the breakout of that five-eighths inch meter as opposed to the one inch and below.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilman Banks?
Thank you, Mayor. Director Davis, I know that you understand. We appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this resolution, and especially, most of the constituents that I've talked to did not understand readiness to serve. Rather than focusing on these rate increases, they were more concerned about what does readiness to serve mean? So as you and your staff were working on these, and I know that you anticipated some of us having questions about the shifting of these charges, did you have a Plan Two or Plan B that we would go to in case we encountered some of the concerns that we have or those that have been expressed today or this evening?
So a plan, that, Plan B is wide open. We could, as Councilwoman Hiller suggested, we could take that five-eighths inch user and say, no change from the existing 2026 rate increase, no change there, add it somewhere else if we wanted to go, again, dollar for dollar what we're losing. We can, we can shuffle just about anything if we're trying to come up with the same amount of revenue that we are losing potentially. We could, just to be transparent, you all could tell us, do away with it and eat that loss, and we would have to then determine where that money will be taken from, what programs, through our operating budget, is that going to impact? So that would be something else that we would consider.
Thank you for all that you've done in this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm totally for it, and you know, getting away from the residential, but a lot of our businesses that would be above that line now would even get an even higher increase, and a lot of our businesses in town are non-chain mom and pops. So now we're putting an extra burden on our business owners, where all we're trying to do is develop business in this town, and it seems like we're putting more and more burden on our business owners. As of right now, I'm more of this, I say, keep it as is right now and just move forward, and we can figure out something else maybe, but to me, what, you said eight point nine percent or something like that versus the ninety-one percent, I just...
Impact, so the active customer base is ninety-eight percent. Generally speaking, ninety-eight percent of our customers are active users. The readiness to serve in active customers are less than two percent.
Okay, so it's just...
You see the difference, the, just to help express where their frustration came from. For a, for a average customer that has active usage, that's a ninety cent increase as opposed to those that had nothing and then saw an eighteen dollar, seventeen dollar change for readiness to serve and a fourteen dollar change for water and then wastewater. And that's why it was so impactful for them, and you all heard so much feedback about that, because it went from zero to almost thirty dollars.
That ninety, that ninety percent, I'm, and I'm there also, it just feels like we're always going after them. I know we, the last time we talked rates, we did a lot less than a lot of other cities in Kansas did, because a lot of other cities in Kansas went a lot higher, a lot faster than we did. But this, I think, is just, I, pretty much the best thing is keep it as is and move forward and look at, look at other solutions more long-term. But right now, I just don't feel right passing on to, like I said, mom and pop businesses or residential users. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Vadi Vialka?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would be able to support this, but if you're, I think you really should consider B, C, and D. Come up with three different plans, one of those as far as cost reductions in your department, and then bring them so we can, so we can see, because it's just, this isn't palatable at all, and it's certainly not going to be palatable to utility users. Thank you, Mayor.
For the questions? Well, Director?
I would, I would, I want to add just one more thing. Because of the work that has to be done administratively, we are going to have to make some sort of a decision if the, if there is a desire to impact readiness to serve in order to help that get set up for 2026 and beyond, because this ordinance says January one, 2026, this is your rate. So I just want to keep that in everybody's mind. We can go back to the table and come up with some other options for you all, and we've been working with the Public Infrastructure Committee. We can see the next November meeting, we can plan to present some additional options there, but just to help emphasize the timeframe that we need to be working in if we want to see an impact, a change to that ordinance.
Well, I appreciate your working so closely with the public information, public committee, but I also took note that you mentioned that there were individual council members who have come and asked and visited, and I would encourage them to continue to do that and make it a priority for them because of the short timeline. Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you. Just wanted to make it clear on my end anyway, that I think getting rid of readiness to serve makes sense. I don't think it worked, and it's caused a lot of administrative hassle for you all and lots of conversation that wasn't productive at all. So I would support getting rid of it and then spreading the dollars in the best way possible. Thank you.
Okay. So thank you for the information and the presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all we have on the way of the non-action items. We'll move now to public comment. I'll call the names as they were submitted. Sandra Lassiter?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to our mayor-elect, Mr. Duncan, and for those that remain. And I just see this as another opportunity for us as leaders in the city as well as citizens, and that is that you're going to have a couple of claims that you're going to be reviewing, and because you are just leaders, and this is going to give you an opportunity to serve justice for some injustices. And so, a concern for all of our citizens in part, and that this gives you an opportunity to be sympathetic and empathetic. From what I understand, and as I just perused those claims, I was concerned because it was such a miniscule amount that these families are asking when we have actually wasted millions of dollars on outside counsel. So maybe the fact that you would consider that would be excellent for our community. My, one young man, Dylan, real concerned about that, because basically his mother, Ms. Carey, just wanted resolve after about three years, and she wanted to know who killed her son. She also had paid seven thousand dollars for a video to be exposed or released, and that was really unnecessary. That's not very much money for a life that was taken. So I see you as managers, and I see you as those that have a voice, and I understand even in some of the farms that we had, that now we're really very aware that you are the bosses, you are the managers of our city, you even boss the city managers, what I hear. So that means that you could give him some wise advice, but you also may take some wise advice from the community as well. And the other one, of course, that's prevalent, is about our Mr. Lowry, and that particular claim is about a child who would like to further her education. claim is about a child who would like to further her education and maybe have compensation for pain and suffering, and to be able to aspire to a higher level, and we could be able to give them a few pennies, so to speak, because of this claim that they have filed. I just think that it's so important that we're living in a day and a time now where we need to consider everybody, and if any one of you had lost a loved one, as these families have, you would want some resolve, you'd want some reconcile, and you'd want someone to have enough empathy to understand the positioning that you have. Don't have a lot to say tonight, but I'm praying that God will speak and that you will hear His voice and that you'll be considerate of these families. A song that comes to my mind is a gospel song that we sing, and it's around Easter time when it talks about that Jesus was crucified. We talk about, in the song, "I find no fault in Him," and it says, "Because God's wonderful." There is a person in this song, and his name is Pilate, and Pilate said, "Bring me some water, let me wash my hands. I don't want to be guilty of killing an innocent man. I find no fault." So all I'm saying is, you have an opportunity to wash your hands of an injustice that's been done, and you can rest at night, you can rest peacefully, or a little more peacefully, because there's been an injustice. You are the voice to change this. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Senate Council. I'm glad to be here, and I stand in the place of community, and I'm standing because I've been watching for the last few years regarding Taylor Lowry, this case. I have known the family, I've known the mom. I've known them as a community worker when I worked with the homeless and the unsheltered. And so I'm very concerned that we're here, standing and waiting for a decision regarding the compensation to these families, or to this family and this young girl. I watched, I followed this trial, this, not trial, this situation, knowing that everyone knows that those things that have been covered up, not revealed, that you knew what was going on, or many of us knew what was going on. I also saw the video myself, knowing that there have been some lies that have been told by some of those impositions that are supposed to be protecting us. What I'm standing here for is hoping that you will do the right thing, and that is take care of this young girl by compensating her, and also allowing the mom to know who killed her son. And so I'm saying, yes, you are our leaders, yes, we come to listen to you, yes, you pass ordinance and everything that is to help us. We need a solution here that will promote and help this young girl to live on and become better. Taylor's gone, he won't return, and we know that, but his daughter is here. So I'm just asking, there is a saying that says, we talk about karma, okay? In the Bible, it talks about sowing and reaping. And part of that scripture says, "Be not deceived, God is not mocked; for whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap." And so whatever we do, either in any particular situation, there's a comeback on it, and we want to find ourselves doing that which is right, that which is good, that which is righteous for one another. Thank you for your turn.
DeMabrius Duncan, did I pronounce that correctly?
DeMabrius.
DeMabrius.
Yes.
Thank you.
I am the mother of Taylor Lowry's daughter. I've had this poster for a few years now, this is what we did for our first press conference. But in this picture, it shows that there was multiple people that had similar situations. One of the gentlemen, he was caught with a machete, which is something bigger than a kitchen knife that Taylor had, and he was able to be arrested and apprehended with no harm done to him. But I'm just here because I want to speak on behalf of this situation. For three years, I have tried to fight for justice for Taylor. The Topeka Police Department put a death threat on Taylor once the officer called out a Sigma-13, Officer in Danger, from being in visual contact with Taylor, who said no threat towards them, just a knife in his hand at the time. The entire accountament with Taylor had, with Topeka Police Department, it is clear to see he was just trying to get away. After the depositions, listening to officers admit they were wrong and if they could do it over again, I've listened to one of the officers have an illegal firearm that killed Taylor that wasn't approved from the sergeant, to one of the officers pulling up and shooting within seconds of encountering Taylor, but denying having tunnel vision, but couldn't explain why he shot. If these officers were so much of in a danger or threat, why did one of the detectives make physical contact with Taylor? Why wasn't other tactics used like mace, a taser, or a less lethal approach in front of innocent bystanders at a gas station? In conclusion, I don't want to have to keep reliving the nightmare that I already have to live, knowing my child has to grow up fatherless. Our daughter is an honor roll student, she's a law-abiding citizen, and deserves some form of justice, because if her dad was here, she had not a worry in the world, because her dad was her everything and a great provider for her and supported her through whatever, whatever needs she may want. How many killings is it going to take here before we open our eyes and admit wrong is wrong and take accountability? Say their name: Taylor Lowry, Christopher Kelly, Dominique White, Dylan Wallstrom, the list goes on. There has been no transparency, K.A. putting a narrative that he charged after officers with a knife above his head, when the video clearly shows he was unarmed when killed. There's been plenty of chances to correct this wrongdoing. Why wait and prolong? We suffered enough. I speak on the behalf of my daughter as well. I don't want to have to keep on having to relive the situation with her and inform her on things that are going on. She does want to be active, but it's a pain, she, her daughter was killed, or her father was killed. I just want some form of justice. I want my daughter to be able to go to college and not have a worry. I want, I just want my daughter to be able to breathe and know that something was said and done. I just come before you guys to ask that you could please take this into consideration. I'm not asking for much, there is no amount of money in this world that can bring my daughter's dad back, but my daughter is an honor roll student, she's going to be a senior next year and graduating. She won't be able to walk across the stage and be congratulated by her father. So I just really want you guys to take into consideration, and if need be, I will pursue with the lawsuit if we have to with Mrs. Lassiter, but I don't have to keep on going there and wasting dollars and my time, effort, and energy. I've suffered enough. My daughter has suffered so much more, and I just, I want you guys to really take into consideration, please. That's all that I ask.
Thank you.
Just want some words to consider as you move into your executive sessions tonight. On October 25, 2025, a U.S. District Judge dismissed the City of Topeka's motion to dismiss yet another Second Amendment case filed by a city employee. This isn't just another legal case, it's a reflection of how our city has handled investigations and truth itself. On page seven of the summary, the judge writes, "The entirety of the investigation, including selection of witnesses, duration of the investigation, lack of communication, and inconsistent treatment of involved parties indicated that the investigation was retaliatory in nature, and that TPD had conducted it in a way to ensure a finding against the plaintiff." The report continues, "The investigator, now the City of Topeka's H.R. Director and other city employees violated multiple personal codes and TPD policies. Police commanders during this investigation provided false statements, and the judge explicitly stated, 'And not only does this violate city personnel code, it raises veracity concern from police commanders who provided false information in an official investigation.' The City of Topeka is aware of this allegation and has not investigated the violations or issued any discipline." Finally, the summary concludes, "In summary, some of the plaintiff's facts standing alone might not be considered adverse action. Plaintiff's evidence that the TPD conducted an unfair investigation and undermined her authority within the chain of command states a plausible claim as adverse employment action. However, the defendant's motion to dismiss on this issue is overruled." So let me be very clear, this is not a theory, this is reality. False information, retaliatory investigations, no accountability. For years, citizens and employees have sounded the alarm, their pleas fell on deaf ears, and now the courts have stepped in. The council cannot, we cannot, we will not continue to ignore these violations. This is a test of integrity, of character, of courage. History has offered countless lessons, if we're willing to heed them. Actions speak louder than words, we must always take sides. Neutrality helps the oppressor, never the victim. Silence encourages the tormentor, never the tormented. The opposite of love is not hate, it's indifference. We are beyond gentle nudges, we are beyond abstract moral reminders. This is not a theoretical debate, this is real. This is about the character of the city, about the people who work here, the citizens who trust in us, and the values we claim to uphold. So our decisions tonight and many more moving forward as this unfolds is a direct reflection on our city's practices, on your leadership, and your accountability."
Thank you. Did he leave? Amber Laven?
I am Dylan Wallstrom's sister. I am here to speak on behalf of him and his mother. It has been three years, almost three years, that we have been dealing with this. His mother has spent countless dollars to try and find justice for her son, but nothing has happened. Absolutely nothing has happened. I have personally not been able to do anything around this, I have been dealing with other gun violence, my brother was also murdered about four months beforehand. We, as families, friends, loved ones, whoever are a part of these men's lives, we know they deserve better. We absolutely know they deserve better. But you also have other constituents that you are serving. You have others out there who have encounters with your law enforcement, who are scared, who are nervous. I am scared, I am nervous, and I am the majority, and I shouldn't be. That is not my place. You, you are the bosses. You have the ability, you have the ability to make the change, you have the ability to push for the change, and we are not seeing it. We are upset, we are hurt, and all we want is change, all we want is justice. We are not the only families that have dealt with this. Just in '22, there were four men, their lives were lost because of those officer shots shootings. You have a daughter here who is just asking for compensation. Dylan also has a daughter. We are not asking for anything on behalf of her, we are asking for things on behalf of his mother. She wants to know who, that's all she wants to know. You would want to know who killed your child, too. You would want to know. I have, shortly before Dylan was killed, I also had another brother, Dylan's brother, who was murdered, and we finally had justice for her. His death shouldn't have made a difference. And now you have two other men, people here fighting for them, and we want your ears. We are not getting them, we are not getting the response. This is the first time I have spoke publicly about this. That year was a year of fear, and now I'm having to relive it all over again. I am helping Carrie, she deserves it. Dylan was one of two of hers, one of two, and now she only has one left. It is your turn, it is in your hands, the ball is in your court. Do what is right by them, do what is right by the people you serve, and make the change, make the change. They deserve, you are accountable. You are accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person that I have on my list. Am I correct? Okay. We'll move now to announcements. Madam Kirk?
First of all, next, we present Resolution 9606, and the fact that it's Veterans Day, the November 11th governing body meeting has been canceled and rescheduled to Wednesday, November 12th at 6:00 p.m. here in the City Council chambers. On that agenda, on the consent agenda, there's one professional service contract with SBB Engineering. We have three resolutions coming out of the P.I. Committee approving budgets over $250,000 for street sewer and storm sewer improvements. And on action items, we have a public hearing and ordinance to establish a Semlar Crossing district redevelopment district, and then discussion on property maintenance code compliance. That includes city's demolition, condemnation processes, amendments to the enhanced prosecution for non-underoccupied properties, and creating a rental registration program.
Thank you. State Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just kind of wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, we had a very successful trunk-or-treat on the 30th. I understand we saw over 11,000 participants, and so I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the Office of Inclusive Communities, all the multiple city departments and all the stakeholders that participated in that event. The other thing that I wanted to bring light to, so given the current federal government shutdown, we mentioned last week that we were going to, there was emergency meeting with the United Way, Cal Valley, and several stakeholders involved in food pantries and providing food to those who are being affected by the federal government shutdown, particularly those members who their SNAP benefits were being affected. And so got a lot of great input from that meeting, and then today, we actually started a city campaign for fundraising to help try to bridge the gap. Obviously, we're not going to make up the millions of dollars that are going to be lost, but City of Topeka wants to do its part. So starting, starting November 14th and 15th, next Friday, next Thursday and Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and then 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., Fire Department, similar to the past reboot with the MDA, is going to be helping pass the hat efforts. And so we'll be at the following five locations, Lyman and Tyler, 37th and Topeka Boulevard, 17th and Arbonia, 29th and California, and Topeka Boulevard in Huntown. We're going to be working closely with the United Way for any collections that we get, get it to the United Way, to ensure that they get out to the relevant or the pertinent organizations that are supporting families impacted by the SNAP interruptions. I do want to thank, again, Office of Inclusive Communities, our firefighters, our fire union, Director Glade, and then our Fire Chief Longstaff for the leadership in these efforts. We're not going to just stop at the fundraising, we're also going to look at some of our existing water utility programs to see how we could expand the benefits to those programs. And then also to winos, folks, it's not just the folks who have SNAP benefits that are being affected, but all those who are being affected by the federal government shutdown. There are opportunities to discuss potential payment plans for water utilities. They just need to get in touch with our call center, which is 785-368-3111. We have a lot of information on our website and then also on our socials, so yeah, so stay tuned, we have a few more initiatives. We have a few more initiatives coming forward that are in development, again, just to help our residents and our citizens. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Thank you for that effort, and I think it's important for us to do whatever we can, whatever level is possible. Move on to the governing body. Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, personally, I want to make a shout out to the voters, and the supporters, and volunteers, and donors that supported my campaign. I thank them all, and will do my best to continue serving thoroughly and well. Correspondingly, want to congratulate my colleagues that were reelected, went through campaigns and were reelected as well. We're all back. So, thank you, that's it.
Councilwoman Abidi Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. City Clerk, please note, I will be emailing you as soon as possible, the 17-page summary on Case 24-4092-KHV, that I think Ms. Twemlow had some reference to. And as part of my announcements, to become part of the public record, I'll also be sending you two short emails that I sent the 30th and the 31st of last week to the City Manager, Governing Body, and Mayor. I did want to go over those briefly. What I sent was all attached is a copy of the judge's summary on city employee/ defendant versus City of Topeka. The judge does not allow dismissal. You can obtain a copy of the summary from Pacer. I am bringing this forward because at this point, TEN, that is T-E-N whistleblowers have come forth to me, and they are from across departments. What started in utilities about two years ago has now spread across departments. Not once did I ask them to come forward, they came to me on their own. Over the past two years and past several months, in talking with them individually, once I read the 17-page summary about the investigatory methods, they all sound very similar to the allegations and concerns that city employees who are now considering themselves whistleblowers and are very fearful of retaliation. The investigations sound very much like the ones that were read in the 17-page report. Also note that in the past two years, I have not been the only one that has known about these whistleblowers. Councilman Duncan, Councilman Banks have been privy to some of this information. If you read the summary, which has been sent to all the governing body, it is fact-based and states the current HR director did not fulfill her duties, and perhaps may even have lied. There is a wealth of evidence that has been shown to me by 10 different individuals. I continue to believe our internal investigative processes are severely lacking. I have numerous emails of my own from over the past two years to our old City Manager, our current City Manager, and our former City Attorney stating my deep concerns, and all were disregarded. And from the final email, I'm requesting an executive session on the below to give some kind of update and legal validation after reading the 17-page summary on why this case is still being litigated. I am amazed that at the very least, the HR Director, with all of the fact-driven information by a judge that was found in the 17-page summary, that the HR Director is not being placed on administrative leave, and a proper trustworthy third-party entity come in and investigate, because out of all of these 10 whistleblowers, at this time, they all want to remain anonymous because they are afraid they will end up getting fired. Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight has been really heavy-hearted for me, because some of the things that were discussed in public comment are things that I've experienced in the past month or so with our police department. I've asked for a couple, I've asked a couple, three or four times for some clarity on a couple of things. I've even called our police chief, I did not get a response. I've talked to a couple of the officers that's been here, I've not gotten a response. And I look on my phone tonight, there's a young man that texted me during our meeting and said, "I've not heard anything from our police department," and it's about the information that I asked about about a month ago. If I can't get a response, they are not going to get a response. And I don't think, that's not how we should be conducting business. Last Friday, I talked to our Assistant Manager Avery about the same situation, and had anticipated a conversation tonight, and I don't see, he's not here. So I'm wondering, what do we have to do? It makes our public really not just have distrust in police, but us. Here's a young man that's placed confidence in his councilperson passing along information, I can't even get a call back. To me, that's troubling. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
So I'm going to kind of sort in order. The trunk or treat was amazing, as Dr. Perez pointed out, Monique and the rest of the city staff did an amazing job on that, and everyone else that was involved. I know we had the KHP, Washburn Police, China Corrections, I think a couple of businesses were there also, so great job there. This last Friday, I was the veteran of the game at the Scarecrows, and then was able to get on air, talk on the city's point of view of scarecrows and the impact they're having. And they just announced also today that they are leading the league in attendance, so that shows you how great that Topeka's showing up for that, and giving Topekins and the Topeka area something to do. Next Tuesday is Veterans Day, this upcoming Saturday is our Veterans Day Parade. That's always a fun parade to be a part of. As a Navy veteran, I've been in it the last four or five years. Unfortunately, I have a family wedding this weekend, so I won't be able to attend, but that is one of the funnest parades, I think, and usually when the weather cooperates, it's a great parade. Idea for the firefighters, Dr. Perez, QR code on the signage, so people could donate that way, because, you know, we've gone to an electronic world where a lot of people aren't carrying cash with them, so if we can maybe get a QR code on the signage, make it easier. And please, you know, SNAP is a very beneficial program. My wife and I were on it for 10-plus years. We both worked at VCF. A lot of these people that aren't SNAP are working families, or someone that's come across a hard time, maybe losing a job, or, and since government shutdown, and now they're not working, not being paid, and trying to struggle, struggling trying to find a way to make things work. A lot of these are, like I said, working families that are trying to get by, and SNAP is one of those benefits that allows you to climb that ladder, as my wife and I did. You know, you may take three or steps, three or four steps up, and then get knocked down a couple, and keep on, you know, as long as you keep on climbing, to me, it's an amazing program to help you get there. Finally, to the staff, on the request of the RHID, there are a few other requirements that I was looking at. I'd like to see, make sure that the things are falling under, like, under 50 units for sale or rent as part of the single project, and then also, each resident cannot exceed 1,650 square feet. That's about half the size of all the properties that are out there right now. So I'd like to see something that's going to be put out there on what's going to be done on these properties, so, because I just don't think it's going to work for what we have going on there, so I just wanted to, like, said, I don't want to send something that's going to fail and not meet criteria, so please look at those aspects also when you talk to the developer. Thank you.
Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you very much. It seems that our public believes that if something isn't said on the record, that it didn't happen. I can understand that feeling and respect it. There's a history of people not trusting government, and sometimes that's valid, so I completely understand that, too. I know who I am and what I stand for, and the people who know me know that, too. And I'm not here for the theatrics or speaking just to be popular. I think there are pathways for justice and ways that are productive, and I look forward to speaking on and working towards those solutions. There's a time to speak up on subjects if I have something helpful to say. That's what I was taught, and I live by that. I also didn't run for this position for myself, I ran to represent the people of my community, District 6 specifically, but the City of Topeka that has housed me and my family for my 41 years plus. In doing this, I have a clear understanding of the weight of my words, so I choose those words to serve the greater good. If you want to know some of my thoughts in depth or for clarity in a productive way, I'm always open and welcome for you to reach out and meet with me. I'm one of 10 people up here who have decided to make this commitment for the community they live in. MarcusM@Topeka.org, that's M-A-R-C-U-S-M@Topeka.org. Please link with me if you want. If you don't want to, you don't have to. If it's easier to just say public things and speak up and say about stuff that you think you know about, you can do that, too. But until you know the man that is, don't try to say that I'm here doing something that I'm not. That being said, our community is one that is hurting, and we are not in a great place. We are not nearly as bad as some of you like to say we are, and I truly believe that. Not me specifically, I'm good, I'm growing. There's a lot of people in this community who are tired of hearing about the negative things about their town when there's so much good in it. Again, I look forward to hearing about and then speaking towards those solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, are you showing light? There he is. Councilman Dobere.
Thanks, Mayor. I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. I guess it'd be nice to get an update from staff, if we have one. If the shutdown continues deeper into November, how that's going to impact, well, anything in general, but HUD funding specifically, because I know then draws may become difficult, so it'd be nice to know what the update of that is, just to give us a reference point. Secondly, Mayor, I'll be brief. As everyone knows, I won the election last night, and I guess I'm technically, not technically, I guess I am the mayor-elect. So I just want to thank everybody. I meant this from day one. Doesn't matter if you voted for me or you didn't. I really don't care. At this point, as I've always said, this is my hometown, and I represent everybody in this community, and I will continue those conversations, and that's how I will lead, is that I'm there for everybody, and I will never ask you how you voted, doesn't matter to me. So with that, Mayor, thank you to everybody out there who did vote, got up to 22%. They hoped for 20, so 2% I guess is better than what was projected. I'll give credit to the Top City 25, Topeka Voter Initiative Group, that was out there trying to get it to 25%. We'll give them the credit for that 2%, but I think part of the reason there is a lack of voting is because of frustration with how they think they can and can't interact with us, and so one of the things I strive to do when I take the seat of mayor is to make sure that people feel more openness and want to get more involved in these processes so that we can get that number up higher. So thank you to Topeka. I look forward for what's to come, but we've got a few more months with you over there, so I'm just going to do my part as I can as a councilman. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer.
I just have a short reminder. So everybody knows, the Kansas Children's Discovery Center opens to their full 30,000 square feet facility. It's doubling what space they had before. It opens on Friday morning, I believe the dedication's around 10:30 AM, so if you get a chance, get out and see what they've added, and it's going to house a lot more events and handle a lot more kids than parents, so I'm excited to see it. That's it.
Senator Joe, I was just thinking about the efforts that you talked about to help people during this time with SNAP benefits and others, and I'm sure you've thought about this, because a lot of people are working families and are still being hit by this, and I don't think that our city employees are immune to that, too, so I want to make sure that we're taking internally care of all of our staff and those who are also being affected by it. So I appreciate your efforts in doing that. There is a need for two executive sessions this evening, but publicly, I would like to also congratulate all those who were reelected, and those new people coming on board, and congratulate Mayor-elect Spencer Duncan on a campaign that I thought was very positive and informative, and I appreciate the fact that you were willing to give it one more try, because sometimes it doesn't happen the first time around. But I'm looking forward to you sitting in this seat come January. Thank you. So for the first executive session, if the City Attorney will read, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving individual employees, as allowed under KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume in this room, in the City Council chambers. The following individuals will be necessary to aid the governing body in its discussion: the City Manager, the Human Resources Director, and any other staff members as needed.
Okay. You've heard the need for this first executive session. Motion to go into session by Deputy Mayor.
Second.
Second by Councilman Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will recess and go immediately into this first executive session. We've concluded our discussions under the first executive session. No action has been taken. There is a need for a second executive session. If our City Attorney returns, he will read that need.
We've probably bored everyone by now.
We'll have to take a pause here for a second. Is he just?
I can't see him.
He was going out there, he was pissed out.
He knew it was a 45-minute one coming up. Person's got to pace himself.
Well, it's all about timing here, and here he is. We're showing light. Mr. City Attorney, would you please read our need for a second executive session, please?
Absolutely. The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 45 minutes to give legal advice and discuss cases currently in litigation and other matters deemed privileged under the attorney-client privilege as allowed under KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room, in the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in deliberations: the interim City Attorney, outside counsel, and other staff members as needed.
Okay, you've heard the need for our second session. Is there a motion to go into session? A motion from Councilwoman Hofer, second by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are immediately in our second executive session. We are continuing our deliberations under our second executive session. There's a need to extend beyond our time right now, so we're going to ask the City Attorney to read, please.
The motion would be to extend the executive session by 30 minutes to give legal advice and discuss cases currently in litigation and other matters. and discuss cases currently in litigation and other matters deemed privileged under the attorney-client privileges allowed under KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room in the governing body chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations: the interim city attorney and other staff members as needed.
Okay. You've heard that need for extension to continue our deliberations. Is there a motion to extend? Second motion to extend by Councilwoman Hofer, second by Councilwoman Miller. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll go right back into our second executive session with an extension. We've concluded our discussions in our second executive session. No action has been taken. There being no further business that comes before this body, the meeting is adjourned.